All right, good evening, everyone. Want to call the meeting of the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners for January the 8th, 2024 to order. Like to welcome those who are in our audience this evening, as well as those who are joining us by TV. At this time, we're going to have our invocation. Pastor John Sawyer of Ambassador Baptist Church is with us this evening, and we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Robbie Wilkile will lead us in that this evening.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of prayer. We thank you for the power of prayer, and I thank you for the liberty to be in this place to pray. I pray, Father, that as we address you, Father, I pray you bless these men. I pray you bless everything that's done tonight, God, that it might bring glory to your name. Righteousness exalth the nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. And I pray, Father, that you'd help us to be reminded that he that come unto God must believe that he is, and that he is a rewarder, then that diligently seek him. And, Father, that's embodied in what sets above our heads, that in this nation in God we trust. I pray, Father, you bless this esteemed council, and the decisions, and the thoughts that will go tonight, and we'll thank you for your grace and mercy upon us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please face the flag, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Pastor, for being with us this evening. Yes, sir. Do we have any agenda amendments to our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that the board consider to add two items to the agenda. One is a grant for technology. It's an application. It is 100% match, but we bring our grant applications to the commission. This would be an amount of $200,000 for technology updates that is provided by FEMA through our State Department of Public Safety. The second one is to go ahead and vote on a state of emergency, and depending whether that we have coming in with ice, high winds, and potential for flooding in the county, we're already on alert, so we'd like to go ahead and get that started in case there was to be a declared disaster, and we need to do anything tomorrow in preparation.
All right. So we'll add the state of emergency to as item six, and then the grant as item seven under Agenda Items?
I was just gonna add 12 and 13, but you can do either one.
Okay.
Yeah, that way we wouldn't get out of order.
All right, well, we can add them to 12 and 13, under the consent agenda. All right. Hearing the manager's recommendation, as well as our clerk's agenda, what's a pleasure of the board this evening in adopting our agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the county manager has presented.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And our first item under decisions this evening is Caldwell Community College Technical Institute, the Watauga Campus Overmatch Credit. And so our county manager, Mr. Duncan, will lead us in that, and I think Dr. Mark Porch is here as well with CCC and TI. If he wants to say anything, he always likes to talk, and we like to give him an opportunity.
Yes, sir. I'll be happy to turn it over to him, but right now, you're asked to endorse a letter on behalf of Watauga Campus of CCC and TI for our overmatch credit in the amount of[234.73][234.74]$139,000. And what that means is that, as the counties contribute toward funding their community colleges, you get credit for that. So if there's grant applications and funding from the state, and we've paid a little bit above our share, you get that credit, and that credit can be transferred to either campus, and essentially, you're loaning it to Watauga County for a period of time till they get their grant, and then as they commit their funding, it's paid back to us. So, and there's no money that changes hands, it's just credit changing hands. So it's kind of token-like in that regard.
Didn't we do this a couple years ago?
Yeah, we have done this, yeah.
2016, I believe, Dr. Porch?
And they were very appreciative in Watauga County, and I'm sure they will be again this go-round. So, do you want to say anything, Dr. Porch? While you're here, I just want to give you a chance, sir.
Not necessarily, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. So with that, and hearing the recommendation, what's a pleasure of the board this evening in adopting this letter to move this grant, or move this funding?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion that we accept this letter.
All right, any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. So, build a nice one.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Next is building outdoor communities, and we have with us Mr. Duncan Cavanagh with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, and he's coming to make a presentation this evening.
All right, well, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. We just want to kind of bring you an update here on a grant application for a feasibility study that we were working on over at Western Piedmont Council of Governments on behalf of the county. It's called Building Outdoor Communities, and just to kind of give a little bit of a background, this all kind of started with the Made By Mountains partnership, which consists of 25 counties in the western part of the state, and their goal is to try to stimulate economic development in our area's recreation economy. They approached the COG back in 2022 with a planning and competitive grant opportunity to advance the outdoor economic development projects that catalyze rural development. So we contacted our local governments in the region, and we're currently working with Caldwell, Burke, and Alexander Counties on these, this building outdoor communities program. Now, the Caldwell Building Outdoor Communities Group was comprised of 12 people, county and city planners, of course Shelley was a part of the group, and we were talking with Donald throughout the process. We had representatives from the Chamber Commerce, of course CCC and TI, NC Commerce, USDA, and Blue Ridge Mountain Bike Alliance, all sorts of different nonprofits from around the county were involved in this. And so the idea here was to make a $25,000 grant application for a trail feasibility study. So what this is, and we prepared the grant application on behalf of the county, what it is, is to examine a potential trail running along the Caldwell Railroad from Lenore to Hickory's River Walk at 321 there, where the bridge is, and also kind of coming up from Alex Lee Boulevard on 321 to 321A, back, back to the Caldwell Railroad over in Granite Falls. Also, the City of Hickory was involved in the process, and they are going to be providing some matching funds for the feasibility study as well. So some of the kind of, the key takeaways, I already touched on a couple of them here, but this is a planning document. You know, what this enables the county to do is to apply for future grant funding, should they choose to go forward with it. So I touched on that partnership with the City of Hickory. Of course, they're built out there trails, and right there at the county line is kind of an opportunity there, and we just hope to hear some good news about the grant application relatively soon, hopefully in the next few weeks, and we'll be able to report back something.
All right. Anybody have any questions? I think one that I would have, Duncan, is this allows a county to apply for future grant funding. Would that future grant funding just be in the feasibility study area, or could we expand that area even north, then more into the Granite Falls or Hudson area?
Well, you know, there's a possibility for doing that. There's $25,000 for the feasibility study. You kind of have to have a relatively smaller area, but we tried to make it as wide as possible.
Yes, sir.
But yes, in answer to your question, there could be other grants that come along that make it possible to do more feasibility studies, or to do construction, if it gets to that point.
Yeah, because I'd like to be able to move it north as we can, if we get that opportunity.
Have you come up with a cost for this, if it does come through?
Yep, the, the, what the Building Outdoor Communities Program asks for a 25% match. So for the county, that would be $6,250 for the grant itself, and the City of Hickory will be $1,250.
But I'm talking about a cost for the trails and stuff.
Uh, yeah, nope.
You have to get the study done before you can find a final cost. Have you had an estimated cost of what it could be, or?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the things that we hope to find out from the feasibility study, and also kind of find out where those parts along the trail, where it could be, where there may be some difficulties that might rise costs, or, you know, maybe there are different routes that can be taken that can bring costs down.
You said us and the City of Hickory. Catawba County got anything in it, or Burke?
No, we approached Burke, but they had other plans for the money.
Right. So we're gonna go it ourselves.
Maybe.
All right, any other questions? Well, do I hear what action we would like to take on this approval this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we supply the 25% match for Caldwell County in an amount of $6,250, along with, of course, the City of Hickory will contribute $1,250 towards this feasibility study for Building Outdoor Community Grant Application.
All right, any other discussion or comment? Here and none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. So thank you again, Duncan, for that, and we look forward to hearing good things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation, Ms. Anna Martin, our Health Director, on our mental health updates for our county.
Good evening, board. I just wanted to do a brief mental health update for you guys, just a few charts. Mental health has been a priority within our community health assessment for some time now, but on the other hand, mental health services was distinguished as our top need for most improvement. We currently have VIA, RHA, Mobile Crisis, Jonas Hill New Directions, and a few others within the county serving as mental health and substance use. And there's many causes, but just to name a few for mental health, it could have been COVID, it could have been the economy, other stressors or burdens on families. So I'm just going to present a few graphs showing where our county stands for mental health. The data was taken from NC Detect. This is just a source that we use within North Carolina data collection. And the sort, and the data I'm presenting is only from November 2022 to November 2023 from the emergency department. So this is data that was collected from the state, not locally, but for Caldwell County. So this one, if you can see, is suicidal ideations, and so for suicidal ideations, planning suicide, didn't happen yet. This shows a comparison of peer counties, so not our surrounding counties. Our peer counties are, they're related, they're similar by demographics, social, and economic factors, just a county that's similar to ours, not surrounding. But however, Burke is on the list, Wilkes is on the list, Surrey, Rockingham, and Lee. So as you could see, May and September of '23 was our larger months, but Caldwell is in the orange, and you can kind of see the trend of how it kind of stayed the same. So dark purple was Burke, orange Caldwell, blue Lee, pink Rockingham, green Surrey, and purple was Wilkes. So suicide attempts or self-harm for our peer counties, the highest month being as well, May 2023, Burke had 21 suicide attempts, Wilkes had 14, and Caldwell had 12. But as you can also see, January 2023 was Caldwell's larger month, not necessarily May's. This just breaks it down for mental health suicidal ideations by race. So as you can see, Caucasian was 517. And this is just for Caldwell County. This is not, the peer counties included as well. So from here on out, it's only Caldwell County. For suicidal ideations age group, this kind of, this really shows where our issues are. So you could see the pink is for our young adults, so that's 23 to ages 49, and they're the highest from 200, it's 266. So from the suicidal ideations, that is the largest group. Zero to four is infant, taller, that's dark blue, there's none of those. Five to 17, school age is orange, 19 to 24, sorry, 18 to 24, college is light blue, young adult, 20, sorry, 25 to 49 is pink, 50 to 64, middle age is green, and 65-plus seniors purple. So that gives you an idea of that last year. And suicide attempt or self-harm grouped by race, Caucasian as well is the lead. All right, so suicide attempt or self-harm grouped by age group, as you could see, the largest is young adult, and then followed very close by school-aged children. So school age is 37, but young adult was 39. And this is just where you can see the trends of suicide attempts. The highest was January 2023, and the lowest was February 2023, but you can kind of see how that year it progressed. And this is the same, it just compares with the state. So the state is actually gray. So we were higher January 2023 than the state, and May 2023, and it looks like October, but the state was higher the rest of the time. And this is the graph for suicidal ideations, it percentages ED visits, so you can kind of see that trend as well. Highest in January, March, and September of '23, lowest in February and June. And this is comparison with the state, the state's gray as well in this one. Just going into some different things that go in with mental health, firearm injury unintentional, this is just breaks it down by disposition. So we have, whenever they go to the hospital, they're either discharged, admitted, they had died, or they transferred to another facility. So this group, this chart shows discharged, it was dark blue, admitted was light blue, green, they had died, and then purple, they were transferred.
This is only those reported to the hospital?
Only that was reported to the hospital, to the state, yes. There's more than likely a lot more.
So just for clarification, this might be a major bean question, but if somebody commits suicide at home, and it turns into a death investigation, but that person never goes to the hospital, that wouldn't be recorded in this?
Not here, they didn't make it to the hospital.
Right.
That would be something else.
And our total for 911 for 2023 was approaching 280 that was reported to 911 system. And some of those would be accounted for in this, but it's up almost 50% over prior years.
And was that intentional or unintentional?
That was all.
All of it grouped?
All of it grouped together, so you'd have to break down the data to see if it was ideation, actual suicide, or unintentional or intentional harm.
So where did the statistics come from, from the suicidal ideation?
So all these statistics come from the state. We use it, it's called NC Detect. It's just broken out, I just used from the emergency department for the hospital.
So these are from questions that are asked at the emergency room when people come in?
Yes.
What about doctors' offices and?
It's not in here, mm-mm. I believe you could break it down as well, like EMS, or I'm not even sure the other options, but this is what I chose to compare, was just through the ED.
And this is through Caldwell's ED?
Mm-hmm.
So if somebody, Dino, if we're in the southern end of the county closer to Frye, Catawba, that person may go that direction before they would come back to Caldwell?
Should clarify by county of residence.
Yeah, normally.
Okay, so it would go by county of residence?
It would go by county instead of just like Caldwell or Frye, it would go by?
Transferred also, the three, still track.
Regardless, these are some very sad statistics. Is, do we have a number or anything through the county that people can call that are having issues and need to talk to somebody about?
So for right now, we do have the 988 is the number throughout North Carolina that anybody can call if they're having issues, as well as, I know Restart is mostly substance use, but they could always contact them, and then Mobile Crisis. With a Mobile Crisis line, they can have someone out to their home really quickly.
Also, for 988, not only can you call, but you can also text, or you can chat, depending on your service you have on your phone or your device. So it's not just, you know, you have to call somebody if you feel concerned about, maybe have reservations about talking, you can text.
I know, and I'm sidebar in Health Department as well, and Board of Health, but it may be worth noting that if we see a trend happening in different months that are different, where I'm going with that is maybe that's the months we need to target that, making that number available, that awareness, that using our local resources, billboards or something to try to get folks to at least know that there's an avenue instead of following through with that.
Definitely, yeah.
So, and I know that our Health Department and the staff is looking at that, as well as I know that EMS and Restart, law enforcement, so, but this is a trend of things that we keep seeing going up, not only us, but nationwide, but we've got to get a message out, I guess, for folks to be able to understand and know that there are different avenues and help.
Yeah, definitely. And I know we keep seeing graphs about what month, but it's also been noted that January is the most noted month for?
Right.
Issues like this. So looking at this slide, this is just firearm injury unintentional by age group. So as you could see, the young adults are the lead as well. So broken this down as well, too, for anxiety and depression, I do have two graphs on that. So this one being anxiety disorders in that year, it's a lot. So young adults by age had the highest, so they did have 557 people that was diagnosed with some type of anxiety disorder. Then that was followed by middle-aged, and then senior, and that's any type of anxiety. And then the last one I had was on depression, and it's the same, young adults is the highest, followed by middle-aged and senior. So this kind of brings to our last one is, what are we doing? What are we doing, and what are our next steps? So we currently in Caldwell County have an employee assistance program, but we also have that program onsite. So working with Beth, we brought our employee assistance program called the Counseling Group within Health and Human Services. They're currently there three days a week, we're kind of looking at altering that, but they can do full counseling sessions if need be. We do have a maternal behavioral health, and so that's partnering with Westlife Health, and a person comes into our maternity clinic twice a week to talk to those patients that's that needs assistance. And then ICGH works hand-in-hand with Restart to see patients within the Health Department. That's, it's more on the substance use side, but they can see someone with mental health. Our Crisis Response Collaborative, it brings all the stakeholders together to talk about needs, and if there's issues going on, and how to resolve those issues. And then I spoke with Jason and Restart, and they're working with Mobile Crisis and VIA to decrease the time from the event to receive help. So if someone wants to call out in the field, instead of going to the hospital and doing what they need to do, have Mobile Crisis meet them or be on the way, so it decreases the time, so it comes to them directly. And then I reached out to the school system to see kind of what programs they were having, what they were doing. So they have many programs for the educators, mental health first aid, different programs that they go through trainings, how to talk with students, and then students also have supportive services within the school system. So our next steps, where we're looking at our needs from our sequential intercept mapping workshop that we had, to look at what we need to work on within the community, funding for behavioral health specialists within our own clinic in the Health Department, and then field work with Restart. So what that means is having one of our nurses or health educators, it'll be probably both, but go out with Restart and talk to individuals in the field, seeing if they need any tests taken, or just talking to them and sharing what resources that we have available. So I think that's all. Do you have any more questions for me?
Anyone? Thank you. I just want to say I appreciate that we're looking at it and trying to do something because we know it's an issue, and whatever we can do to try to help folks, but they got to want that help, too, and.
Yeah.
So, but we got a lot of resources available, and I'm very, very pleased that we do, and we thank you for everything you're trying to do to make that available.
And if there's any other data you want me to try to collect, and get it to Donald and go from there, but we can look at it.
Next time, when you come, we'll talk about bursts and something that's exciting.
Okay, that sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you, Anna. So next is a presentation about building inspections and updates, and we have Jason Murphy with us this evening, and he's going to tell us a lot of the good things that's going on in the county.
That's kind of hard to follow after Anna.
Yeah.
I just want to give you an update and some of the accomplishments from a building inspection. This slide is showing the past three years' number of permits issued, total number for 2023 was 2544. Of that 2544, 605 of them were new residential stick-frame homes or manufactured homes. Couple in that number are additions, but very few, approximately 50, the rest of them are new homes. So you can see the trend over the past three years. Total number of inspections for calendar year 2023 was 11,398 inspections, that's with a staff of five. So that's a tremendous amount to be able to accomplish and still keep the workload where it is, needs to be. This next slide shows residential. The previous slide was all permits, this is just residential. You see in 2021, there was 541 versus 605 in 2023. That's showing the permit valuation based to the last three years, how the trend keeps going up, 30.5% increase, and the valuation from projected building cost.
Commissioners, I think it's worth noting, too, that this current budget year is the first year that your permit center is completely self-sustaining, based on fees, so it doesn't come out of your general fund taxes, it's only the users pay for this. And so that's phenomenal, and this is also the first year that the state has required us to file a report to be audited for that. So we're in compliance. And if the trend continues, we're going to. And if the trend continues, we're gonna need more help because you don't want to have delays in getting people in their homes or getting businesses inspected, a foot inspection. We've been lucky this year and fortunately weather has cooperated with us. We had a drought, so that allowed us to actually get a lot more done, but you won't always have that. Guys are doing a phenomenal job.
When you say staff of five, is that five field folks or is it four field and one in the office to man the phone?
Well, it's a staff, I'm excuse me, I misspoke. It's a staff of seven, that's five in the field and two in the office.
I got you.
So that presents challenges in itself to get to everything in a timely manner. At no point in time have we been over the next day inspections. We're always there by the next day.
You know, I can tell things are going well because I don't hardly ever get any calls about building inspection. And now even environmental, I think we've finally got caught up on that and everything's you know, when my phone quit ringing, you boys doing a good job. Boys and girls are doing a good job, I'm proud of you for doing that. Thank you.
Yes, sir, that's our goal.
But it's worth noting as Donald has said, they're gonna need some help if we keep seeing the trend and the trend is build because there's nothing available in the market. Very few homes available for purchase. We hear that all the time from our real estate folks, people trying to transfer or come in with new jobs into our area. And a lot of them can't get here because they don't have any housing available. So they're moving toward building.
We received an update this morning at lunch from our real estate group off the MLS and average home on market right now in Caldwell County is around forty days. And that's up from about fifteen to eighteen days two years ago. And that's simply because of available product. If we had more product, that number would be shorter.
Well, and we know interest rates
Correct.
have driven that slow down just a smidgen, but the understanding is they're gonna start dropping hopefully this year, which is gonna allow more people to be looking at moving around. So which is gonna mean your jobs gonna get even more.
Yes, sir.
We didn't go all the way back before COVID, but I think your your total number of housing starts is almost doubled in five years, if I remember that right. I think two thousand seventeen to now, it's basically double for new housing starts.
Yeah.
Which is where you need to be. If you remember seeing some of the presentations from the cog during those years, we needed essentially double the number of housing that we were producing then and you're still behind, but you're gaining on it. You're doing a phenomenal job, so it's great for the local economy.
Yeah.
And I keep looking for our new economic development commission lady to bring a bunch more apartments and all this stuff into us too, so. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. I will say as he's leaving, the calls that I do get now from a lot of our builders and realtors are that our staff is very pleasurable and easy to work with and meet their needs and they're appreciative of that. And so we do appreciate everything that you and your staff do, Jason, in helping, which is driving some people wanting to come to Caldwell County and build a home as opposed to some of our surrounding neighborhoods where they're having a little harder time getting permitting done and getting things accomplished. So we're very pleased to hear those good things. So next we have Paige Counts coming and she's gonna do a year in review.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm not gonna do, really do anything. I'm just gonna do a short introduction and then the magic people are gonna do, work their magic. Donald asked us to do a year in review and these are things we were able to accomplish thanks to your leadership. So this features every department and the successes we've had this year. And thanks to Kirsten Matheson, we have it in video form. Thank you.
Thank you. That was awesome, thank you. Thank you for telling stories.
Great story to tell of the accomplishments of our county and our county employees and to our citizens. That's just, that's just amazing.
We couldn't have done this without the help of the department heads who sent us their information. So this all came directly from what department heads felt was their biggest achievements. Thank you.
We certainly appreciate it, Paige.
Yeah, thank you, Paige. Thank you.
So that brings us then to our consent agenda. Our county manager, Mr. Donald Duck.
Trying to get logged back in here, I got a little lost in that presentation. Fun to watch all the stuff we've done in a year. Kinda, kinda goes by too fast. Let's see, budget revisions. We have some FEMA reimbursements coming in and of course, we've had a busy time this year with EMS. You may have saw some of those stats and you'll see more later. And so we'd like to take that FEMA reimbursement money and apply that to the vehicle maintenance repairs line item of twenty eight thousand six hundred dollars. We've had additional generators that need to be replaced in our two oldest units, both seven and eight years old, replacement of three HVAC units on those older units as well. And unexpected replacement of two turbos on those older units. So trying to keep that fleet going and just maintenance costs associated with wiring issues on the wrecked unit that was refurbished by another provider. So we've had a lot of electrical problems with that, so that's the main cost there. Budget provisions for the flock camera contract. So you've had flock cameras in place for two and a half years now, a little longer than that. Flock has offered to lock us into a contract for the next five years at the same amount for our contract. So that's fifty thousand dollars a year roughly, not counting additional maintenance costs. So if one gets damaged, that's just our use for fees. And then, and so because it's a multi-year